Good afternoon. Welcome to the city commission meeting Tuesday, August 12th. Would you call the role, please?
Mayor McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Adamcheck.
Here.
Commissioner Opel.
Here.
Commissioner Mata.
Here.
Commissioner Minton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you join me in the presidential allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is a work session. Before we start our work session, would you like to allow comment?
I'm.
Are we going to get anything significantly different? Sure, whatever.
Was that a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow public comment.
Second.
It's the mood in second. Would you please call the role, Jared?
Commissioner Adamcheck.
Yes.
Commissioner Opel.
Yes.
Commissioner Mata.
Yes.
Commissioner Minton.
Yes.
Mayor McCullough.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. This work session is the 2026 budget discussion. Danielle Dooley, our city manager, will make the presentation.
Good evening, mayor and city commissioners. Thank you again for the opportunity to come before you and talk about our 2026 budget development process. You'll recall, the last time we talked about budget, we set our revenue neutral rate to be fifty-five point, or we determined we would pass a resolution to exceed our revenue neutral rate by two mils. And so that would allow us to go up to fifty-five point one oh nine mils. So this recommend, this next conversation that we have coming up is just rolling through what that recommend, what that mill levy increase would look like. Quickly, though, just kind of going again through our budget strategy, always good to remind ourselves what our goals were, to have a transparent and engaging budget process, to close our revenue expenditure gap, present a balanced budget for 2026 and forward, and then to develop a short and mid and long-term strategies to grow our local economy. Calendars, we did make a change to the calendar. We will not be having two readings of the budget ordinance. We will only be having one reading, and so that will be, the hearing and the ordinance will be on September 16th. And as a quick reminder, we have our two budget open houses. The first one is on August 16th, Saturday, at the Douglas Activity Center at nine o'clock a.m. And then on Thursday, August 21st, we will be over at Eisenhower Activity Center, and we will begin at 5:30. So we are very excited about those, and if we have a little bit of time after we have our budget discussion, happy to kind of walk through what the run of show is going to be for those two open houses. We're very excited. So the change here for our revenue assumptions, you'll recall that we proposed a 3% increase in our water and wastewater utility rates, a 6% increase in the stormwater rate, one and a half percent growth in our sales tax revenue. We are going to capture the 1.4 million in property tax increase from our market growth or those community improvements that were made. And then the change that is different from what was presented at the July 8th budget is the approximately 1.5 million, 1.495 million, and property tax increase from those additional two mils that we talked about last time. So we are leaving the 1.088 mil for the Riley County Police Department. We have the point zero four six mil for the library, and then we added that point eight six six mil for the general fund. Again, just want to roll through these numbers. These are the numbers that you saw at the July 8th presentation, where we have that 1.088 for the Riley County Police Department. This does include budgeting for delinquencies. Over the last couple of years or so, we've seen a trend of a 2% to 3% delinquency rate. So we have had to come up with that delinquency rate out of our general fund over the last several years. So staff is recommending that we budget for that delinquency rate. Once those delinquencies do start coming in, it would be our recommendation that we start having a cash reserve for our Riley County Police Department fund so that we would not have to budget for those moving forward. So the change for the general fund, you will see is italicized here. So that increase was on July 8th, your number that you saw was about 8.898 million, and the mill levy, the 2026 mill levy was 11.884. So you will see an increase of approximately $648,000 here. One of the things that we wanted to talk through, we got our revenue neutral rate statements from the county. Those hit mailboxes last week. And one of the things we, you know, at City Hall, we all get those. A lot of us live here in town. And so one of the things we wanted to just kind of talk through is, we had a house, an example from a Colbert Hills house, so that property value had went up to, appraised value had went up to about $515,000. So the property value increase on that particular home was 3.45%. So the total taxes due increase is about 4.37%. We had another example from a home in Miller Ranch. The appraised value was 387 for the 2025. The property value increase was 9%, and the total taxes due increased to 13%. And then we had another example in the Ward Three District, where the home was appraised at 215,000. The property value increase is 6.76%, and then the total taxes due increased to 8%.
Is this with, with this year's valuation and last year's mill levy, or how does that work? How's that working?
Yep. So this is using the 2025 appraised value, and then this is using the increase from what your total taxes were due this year in 2025 and what they will be in 2026 with the new appraised and assessed valuation. So this is showing kind of what the idea here is that when your property taxes are going up 13%, some of that might, a lot of that is related to your increase in your investment in your property, not necessarily that the city or the county has raised your property taxes 5%. Some of that is due to the growth in your investment in your home. So just kind of wanting to talk through that, one of the, we know, we get a lot of questions when those statements hit mailboxes and when there are, you know, we see it in the newspaper today that the increase, the property taxes were going up 5%. And so really, each property needs to be evaluated on its own and to sit down and walk through that. And this is one of the things that we have, we're wanting to do and wanting to help our residents when they do come to our budget open house, is if you bring in your revenue neutral rate statement, we're happy to sit down and kind of walk through these calculations with you. And we're also going to have a couple of samples, so a $250,000 home, just to kind of show how the mill levy increases impact all those different properties. But this was just a quick example that we wanted to show you all tonight. So again, the only numbers that have changed on this slide from the July 8th presentation is that 2026 budget, that top line in property tax. That's that $648,000 number reflected through there. Again, projected revenues by fund, general fund is the only number that has changed from the July 8th presentation, and that's that $648,000 increase. And again, budgeted expenditures by fund. So again, that's changed from your July 8th presentation, an increase of about $648,000 in the general fund expenditures. So what, what does that mean? So on July 8th, we presented a budget, a general fund expenditures that were about $460,000 less than the 2025 budget. This proposal that you have before you today shows a $186,000 increase from the 2025 budget, or about a half percent increase. That $648,000 will be used to pay for promotions for employees, step increases for firefighters, a cost of living adjustment, plus annual salary adjustments per our policy for employees. One of the things I do want to point out is we are excluding department directors, the deputy city manager and the city manager from any cost of living adjustment or annual salary adjustment in 2026. And then this also would include $187,000 for a vehicle or equipment replacement that we would prioritize or building maintenance that we would prioritize. So tonight, we have scenario A, which was the first scenario that was presented to you all on July 8th. It was a 1.134 mill levy increase. It did not have any cost of living adjustments for employees, no vehicle or equipment replacement, and no building maintenance. Scenario B is what is presented for you tonight. So that cost of living would be a 2.4% increase, plus those annual salary adjustments per policy, and then a potential $187,000 for vehicle equipment or building maintenance. Vehicle equipment replacement or building maintenance. And that would be that full two-mill levy increase, so that would put our total mill levy at that 55.109. Or there's scenario C, and what we are all very much looking forward to tonight is conversation and discussion, and finally, direction from the governing body this evening about where you would like to see this mill levy fall, how you would like for staff to prioritize. And we are here to, to answer questions that you all have this evening.
I have one.
Thank you, Danielle. Questions for Danielle?
Yes. Okay, when, if we add up the, and the two slides, assessed valuation and mill levy analysis, you add the 27 million plus the 14 million, yeah, those two totals. It's about 1.9 million short of the property tax total for the 2026 budget. Is that the vehicle property tax?
That's your motor, motor vehicle taxes.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's one for now.
Sure, go ahead.
Is there a way that we can talk about our, because it's still a little bit fuzzy, right? We've got $43 million coming in property tax. If for $38 million general fund expenses, I know all those general fund expenses don't come from property taxes, and all those property taxes don't go to the general fund. So I think that's a little bit, I'm still a little fuzzy on where those go. And we, I'm sorry, I should have wrote, wrote down my question ahead of time. Sorry, somebody ask another question.
No, can I, can I try to maybe answer what I think you're trying to ask? So we know that we have, we generate about 43 million in property taxes, and we have nine and a half of that goes to the general fund, and then the rest of it is divvied up to these other funds. So employee benefits, that's our health insurance, capers. And then we have the fire equipment reserve, which is a dedicated mill that we set aside for replacing our fire equipment. And then KP&amp;F, of course, has a dedicated mill to it. And then that bond and interest fund has a dedicated mill. So truly, that's where you can see where all those property taxes are allocated per fund.
Right. But then the expenditures out of those funds, like where, like how do those break out?
So we do have expenditures by, so we don't, you're right. We don't break out like this 38 million of your property tax, but one of the, one of the candidates actually asked this question too, right? And so if we calculate that, we know that about 9.8 million dollars. So if I could just have the grace to round that to 10, and if I could just have the grace to round 38 to 40. So we know that about 25% of our general fund expenditures are funded with property tax. So if you kind of want to roll that ratio throughout all those expenditures, you could just assume that about 25% of every invoice that we receive is being funded with the property tax.
Danielle, more on, on strategies of our expenditures. So all of our revenue projections are, I mean, they're projections, so they're, they're guessments. How are we handling if we're seeing revenues not come in where we think? How, how do we handle that on the expenditure side?
Sure. So that's absolutely managerial oversight and discretion. You'll recall in 2024, you all had a pretty tight year, where revenues were not coming in, and management had to step in and really tell department directors, who were very diligent in making sure that they were only making purchases that were absolutely necessary. And one of the areas that we've really cut back is when we're looking at the opportunity, when we have a position turnover, and really taking a look if there's an opportunity to either merge that position, redefine that position, or if we really truly need to refill that, backfill that position. That's a, just that managerial oversight that you all provide discretion to the city manager for.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's just a good talking point, that when we set the, the budget, which, I mean, I really like to look at the expenses and like what, what our expenses need to be in holding those, but knowing that if revenues aren't coming in, that we, we do tighten up what's going on.
Yeah.
I always like looking at this as a total property tax dollar increase over dollar increase, which you don't provide a nice schedule to do that. But if you were to take those assessed valuation and mill levy analysis, we have the 27 and the 14, and you add those together, you get 41,261. And then if you add the other two for the 25, you get 38,302. So just want to know if you agree with my numbers, shows about a.
Sorry, John, can you say that again? I was trying to write down what you were saying.
Thirty-eight, three oh two.
John, John, can you start from the beginning?
Sure.
Because I'm trying to track what you're saying also.
If we take the, what's on the screen right now, the 27, one, two, oh, and then add in the other page, which is 14, one, 40.
So the amount that goes, the city, the, the part that goes directly to the city plus RCPD and library, correct?
Yeah, add those two together, and you get 41, 261, 225. And then if you add the 225 numbers on the same pages.
Oh, last year.
Last year, you get 38, 302, 742. And so I calculate that to be about a 7.7% increase. So to me, that's the amount we're increasing total taxes, property taxes for the city year over year. Again, that's just me. That's the way I like to look at it.
You're taking a mill levy and valuation.
Mill levy evaluation, all that, you know, what, and I know we looked at the different areas of the city, but on average, everyone in this city, how much more money are they going to have to pay? It comes out to 7.7%. Because that's, that's amount of taxes, we're going to say, we're setting the mill levy to collect that much.
That's how much they'll, that's how much they'll have to pay on the city portion.
Yeah, just the city.
The city portion. I just want to make that part clear, because that's not talking about.
Right, where the, where the county just had in the paper today, said they were looking at 5%.
If you, if you go back to the slide that breaks, breaks down the percentages upfront, that 7.7 is based on that 1.462, 670, and that's at 3.8%.
Right, that was the valuation increase was 3.8, because if we did nothing, we're going to increase that to 3.8.
The next number is what gets you at a 7.7.
Exactly. So you got to add those two together to get to your 7.7, where the revenue neutral is, just you don't do either of those two.
Yep.
And you stay flat, which I think that's pretty tough to do.
Yeah, if your home.
On any situation.
Yeah, and the, if your home happened to grow by 3.8%, your revenue neutral rate statement said 7.7.
Right, with what we, with what we passed.
Yep. But that, that can fluctuate, right?
It can fluctuate, but I can't take into account everyone's.
Yeah, on average.
On average, it's going to be 7.7%.
Correct.
Because of what the, because of what we have on the books right now, that we said we're going to do. Like I said, I saw the paper, even though the county started at this extremely high number, they seem to have gotten down to 5%. And understanding the school district had gotten down to 5%. So we're the leaders of the pack when it comes to the property tax increase. And then I'll throw the police department in there, which went up five and a half percent. If you take out animal control, it went up about 4.2%.
That was 4.9? Was it 4.2?
4.18 was, I had. That's a use of 300,000 that we had. So again, I don't think, everyone knows where I'm coming from, is I just think it's all too high. And we're leading the pack as far as what's coming out, and everyone else has been able to manage lower than this number. I was hoping actually that we could get to a four and a half percent, which when I was arguing with the police department, I said, take out animal control, we get down to four and a half. It was hoping for a four and a half across the board. So again, just where I'm coming from and the way I look. And if you look at just the city portion of the assessed valuation and mill levy analysis, it's 8.8% increase that is going up on that page, and it's going up 7.2% on the other page, although I would argue that's because of decisions made on how you're budgeting the police department, and you're doing more out of property tax than you have historically, which is a decision you're making to, to do. I mean, you could not make that decision because.
To cover the delinquency, you're tying up.
Right. I mean, that money, that money by putting it there, it's freeing up money that was used before out of the budget to cover it, because the delinquency rate, unless you're saying it's changing, or anticipated change year for year, it's not that it's new. It's just we're changing the way we're funding it. And mind you, the statute says it's all supposed to be funded by property tax, which we're not doing.
Currently.
Currently, right, although the statute says you're supposed to do that.
One of the other pieces that I did want to talk through a, a little bit is just a couple commissioners had asked me to speak to our, our employees and what that means for us to look at a a COLA and annual salary adjustments. So one of the things that we do here, we do exit interviews, and one of the things that is always checked on an exit interview when we know when someone is, is exiting our organization and that, that is pay, is one of those things that is, that is always checked. It is very difficult when we continue to see other entities that are very similar to ours or who are also in the, the public sphere, such as the school district, RCPD, and the county, being able to continue to consistently offer cost of living and, and salary adjustments. We kind of wanting to dive into some of these anecdotal things a little bit more. 50% of our workforce population has only been with us one to five years. And so when we look at that and we look at over the last two years, we have not done, and we have not proposed any sort of cost of living or, or salary adjustment. And I think that's very difficult for those folks who have only been with us less than five years to, to understand and acknowledge that while we have been consistent with our raises in the past, and we have been consistent, and we did play some catch-up in 2022, I do think it's very hard for them to understand that they're not eligible for cost of living or salary increases when other entities are. An anecdotal example that I will give, we just lost a superintendent in our street department. He was very instrumental in helping us with the snow removal in that winter storm that we had earlier in January. He's leaving our organization, and he's going to the county for $9,000 more a year. So I will just share that anecdotally with you, that it is important for us to look at doing these cost of living adjustments and annual salary adjustments. I do think that there are different ways that we can go about that. But going any, any more than one to two years without an adjustment, I think will be very difficult for us to continue to recruit and retain employees.
I would just like to say in support of that, that, you know, every so often we do these pay studies, and they always say we're low, and then we have to catch up. And then, of course, we've already paid a couple hundred thousand dollars for the pay study. And then in a couple of years, we're out of whack again. So I think trying to maintain the structure that suggests it is probably a good idea.
I'll just chime in. I know at the last meeting, Peter challenged me and said, when we were talking about this, and said, you gave the police department a 2.4% increase. And my answer was, we did, but we only went up 4.5% in total. And so I think that's the challenge, is to find the money to do that without taking the budget up so much. And scenario A was your recommendation for us to do. I'd like to get lower than that recommendation.
Was it a recommendation?
Yes.
Or was it just a, they presented?
No.
We were given three scenarios.
No, she said that was her, it's in the memo. And, and you asked that question last time, and she told you it was her recommendation.
I have a different interpretation of that conversation, John.
City manager, was that your recommendation?
This is the recommended budget that I did put before you. I did call it a recommended budget, and then we did have different scenarios, so.
Could I just point out that the police department budget is probably 95% personnel, and the city budget has to buy things that are in, going up, exciting, like asphalt, cement, that kind of thing. So it's, it's not quite apples and apples. We're doing, we have other expenditures that are outside our purview that are going up seeing with inflation, not just personnel.
So, John, I'm going to ask you a question. You had said you were comfortable with RCPD going up by four and a half. You're, you're talking about their expenses going up by four and a half.
The total budget went up. Because we just, and that's, we just get a number too. I mean, that, it's just a total dollar number.
Right.
And that total dollar number, one up 5.5, but if you take out the 300,000, it's 4.18.
I, I guess I was just, I feel like, I mean, the way those happen are a little bit different on the RCPD, because they get a dollar amount, and they get funded no matter what at that amount. Versus, I mean, ours, ours are more projections, and we have to live within whatever revenues come in. It's not a straightforward, if we say we want or need 38 million to run the general fund, there's no guarantee that we're going to get that. It may have to get cut. I just was. I, I, how did you come at that, from the, at the law board, that percentage increase?
It's kind of like how I always do, is I kind of approach it from a taxpayer perspective, and what I think is reasonable for a taxpayer to pay. Usually, you can call it arbitrary, it's somewhere between 3 and 5%. And I think once you start getting over those numbers, I don't think most people out there are getting increases more than 3 to 5%, so you're affecting their cost of living. So, I mean, I've always approached this from the taxpayer advocate standpoint, and that's where.
So you would support a 5% increase on the city, just the city's portion? Or whatever it is equal to RCPD's?
Well, I'd prefer 4.5. The fact that the, I take down the.
Delinquency?
No, the fact that I take down the RCPD to 4.5 is because they absorb the cost of the animal control, which is a savings in this budget. So they should, should at least be able to match what that is.
Cut that from the expenditure side.
Yes, from the expenditure side.
Danielle's doing math.
And to be honest, they only really added like 275,000 allocation to the city, but the city should have cut 300,000.
Yeah, the law board packet has 273,000.
Right.
I mean, I think for me, question wise, I don't, I don't know that I have a, a ton of questions, and I'm interested if there's comments and feedback from people. That's just where I am, and then I like to discuss it afterwards with more conversation if we have those.
Okay. Would you like to have public comment now, then?
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay. Danielle, we'll open it to public comment then.
I don't know the best one to leave this on. We'll do the scenarios.
Andrew Von Lintel, 225, Four Winds Court. Speaking of 225, Four Winds Court, just for your, I mean, I'm, it's showing 10.25% for Manhattan on my increase. My house went up like. two five percent for Manhattan on my increase, my house went up like twenty thousand dollars, it's a four hundred thousand dollar property-ish, four and sixteen is what they're going to move it to, um, that is the highest of all of the, I mean, the next highest is the USD three eighty-three general, that's seven point seven three percent. And fortunately for me, my wife got a new job and she's making a lot more money, but this is, this is rough on a lot of people, this is really rough. I mean, a lot of houses are going to be two hundred thousand, it's going to be a two hundred fifty dollar increase year over year, inflation is real. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Goodness, you only get three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners, Gary Wills, thirty-three oh eight, frontier circle. I also have my, as you have, your revenue neutral state and I'm, statement, and I'm sure you digested it thoroughly, I've been trying to do some analysis over the last five years of my property taxes for all taxing entities, it's kind of been interesting, you kind of, most people in general kind of forget about a couple of years ago in terms of taxes, they just kind of think about last year and this year, in terms of their thought processes. This year, I, I'm happy to say that I have the privilege of only contributing seventy-four dollars and eighty, or twenty-two cents overall, and most of that comes from the city, seventy-three dollars. In twenty twenty-four, it was much more significant from the city, but that's just the way it falls. Sometimes your assessment goes up a lot, and sometimes it goes up a little bit, it just depends on the market and who's buying and what they're paying for it. Just to reiterate, and I don't know how you can do it, but for the public, for the public, including the RCP discussion is very confusing, because like somebody said, you have no say, none whatsoever. So I don't know that you can do it, maybe next year in the presentation, figure out a way to take all the money out of the discussion that pertains to RCPD and just talk about the city money. Until the law board is elected by the people fully and they're responsible for the assessment, there's always going to be that confusion. So if possible, next year somehow separate RCPD's numbers so that it's clear to the public that we're only talking about the property tax in relationship to what the city assesses, because even though the city assesses or doesn't assess, but they pay eighty percent of it and the county pays twenty, I think we all agree, or at least from the nods, that it's so confusing, it is just so confusing. As I, as I think about this next year, you know, or this, yeah, the next year's budget, it's proposed, and I applaud you for the recommendation of taking the directors out of the COLA, that's, that, that is very responsible and very noble of you. I would ask you to consider, instead of naming the position, go by the salary. If you're making a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year, which numerous people in the city are already, whatever their position is, do they really need a COLA to stay? The gentleman who left, he gets nine thousand or eight thousand dollars more, I don't know how long he was with, in his position, maybe more than five years, I don't know. And that's okay, that's just the market, and the person who will step up and fill it may be very competent as well. Thank you.
Do we have other individuals who are interested in speaking? Seeing none, I'll go back to the discussion.
Actually, maybe to pick up what Gary was talking about, and this really has nothing to do with setting this budget, but to make it not so complicated in the future, is to really limit what's being done by property tax, like in other words, fund all of our RCPD with property tax, so that it becomes very easy, which is what the statute says to do anyway, and then you, you just know what it is, because it's all there, and then maybe look at the other parts of the budget, like all of the fire department in there, so if you can narrow that down to just like all the police, all the fire, and try to get something that people can really understand, I think it would, would go over much better with people, because right now we're taking a little bit of money here, a little bit of money there, paying for part of this fund, part of it in property tax, that, that's why we're having this whole debate about the police department now, is because we're switching around how we're funding it. I would say after you totally settle on the budget, if we could look at a way to rearrange that, I think that would help out.
Where, where else do we fund RCPD?
Ad valorem taxes and, is that, is that what you're talking about, John, like, or are you-
No, they're doing those, no, they're using those vehicle taxes and stuff.
That, that's, sorry, that's what I meant, the motor vehicle taxes.
Because that's the actual-
It's, yeah, page one of three in the budget book.
But that's what they're doing, the property tax, and then they're putting in this other money, and then they're putting in reserve funds, so that's why.
We shouldn't have side conversations.
Oh, John was just showing me this budget page, that's all.
It, it's in the budget.
Yeah.
Again, I'm just, we can keep debating the budget, I just think maybe when it's all over, we can look at that, and I think that would simplify it a lot for people, if you just know, okay, what's property tax, it's, you know, it's the police department, it's the fire department, and maybe it's debt service or something.
Um, something that I, I'm still trying to wrap around is, so we, we, we've got this proposed seven percent increase in property tax levy, and I know not all of that goes into the general fund, but our general fund expenditures are only going up a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, so where's the rest of that increase going?
I'm sorry, you were crashing a number really quick.
That's okay. So basically, if, if our general fund expenditures aren't increasing but a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, where, where do we intend to spend the additional seven percent or so of property taxes that we're going to levy, or we may levy?
So it, it will be in salaries.
Okay, so that wouldn't, that, wouldn't, doesn't that come out of the general fund expenditures?
So I, I think the confusion is, is that the property tax, could you go back up to the city property tax proposed mills? So, I, I just think that the confusion is that we're, in the general fund one, that's a million dollars more, am I, yes, I'm doing that, but yet our general fund expenditures are not increasing by a million dollars. And so I, I think that's where Peter's going, so when we're talking about general fund and the revenue from the other sources, where do we think we're going to have maybe a shortfall from other, so, I, I think that that was-
Yeah, 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 it's like a general fund inception.
So, okay, so actually, if you will look at the original memo that we gave you all on July eighth, you would see that the beginning fund balance for general fund is eleven point one, and so we are actually projecting an ending fund balance in the general fund of eleven point eight. So that is about a seven hundred thousand dollar revenues exceeding expenditures, and so yes, we are budgeting to add that to the cash reserve, one of those conversations that we have been continuing to have is making sure that we have a healthy cash reserve, and we have, you know, pulled that down in years past. So while there is that additional seven hundred thousand that we have, which is about what we are looking at increasing here, the six hundred and forty-eight thousand, while I was not comfortable proposing a COLA or an annual salary adjustment for employees with just the one point one three four mil increase, was because that is, is very close, right? That's only a two percent margin of error. And so if revenues are not coming in, but yet we've committed to cost of living adjustments and annual salary adjustments, that adds to the base and that adds to our expenditures. So without an additional ongoing revenue source for this COLA and for the salary adjustment, I'm not comfortable making that recommendation to make those increases to the salaries.
That makes a lot of sense, and I think that's kind of a, an important distinction between the city budget and the police department budget, is they don't have to maintain that cash balance, because they're going to get their revenue by statute from us, and, and we do have to maintain that cash balance.
I mean, the important distinction between them is that the law board is approving their expenses.
Right.
We are sitting here debating revenues, not expenses, and so I think that's where we're getting a little bit off, because I, I don't know that John meant to say that he would do a four and a half percent increase on general fund expenditures, which is what you approved, approved on the law board, yours, which created-
The, the law board doesn't maintain an emergency reserve and an IT reserve, it's not like they don't do those things.
But it's not, it's not thirty percent of their, their yearly expenses.
The, the thing that I would just add to that conversation, and this is why we have talked about needing to budget for those delinquencies, so our, our agreement with RCPD is very much, very similar to a contractual agreement. So they submit to us that they need, it's twenty-four point zero seven zero, okay, about twenty-four million, and so they submit that requirement to us, and then let's say that those property taxes don't come in, I have, city manager has no oversight to tell them not to purchase vehicles or not to implement pay adjustments or, or not to move forward with any large purchases, and so that, that is one of the things that's very different about the RCPD budget that we have, that requirement that we have to fund them, versus with some of our other departments, like streets or parks, we can say we're not going to repair that road, or we are not going to be able to purchase that robotic mower.
Jamie, I thank you for making that distinction, I, I hope that that clarifies a little bit for people who are here in the room, people who are listening or watching at home. I know it helps me think about it a little bit more clearly as well. Danielle, your further explanation is also helpful.
So because it's on expenses, can we go to the general fund expenses? I mean, I, I have to say, I'm, I'm impressed that we're presenting a budget that's close to last year's budget, where I'm, I'm more comfortable at last year's budget of thirty-eight million from an expenditure side, I'm talking about general fund revenues specifically, so I, I do think it's impressive on, on what we could do year to year, knowing things are getting more expensive and costs are going up, that we're, we're not increasing that general fund expense by a significant percentage on that. Where I'm at, I'm more comfortable with the general fund expenses being closer, being at last year's, but.
Okay.
I do wish that we could give the law board a little bit more direction, because when they're approving expenses, they are approving their revenue, because we have to fund all of their expenses. And I, I hope moving forward that we can hopefully give our representative or representatives to the law board from this body a little bit more direction, and, and hopefully they keep that in mind. So, yeah, if we think about, like, we, we've talked a lot about inflation, and our employees are facing the same amount of inflation, it's, it is no joke, I, I, my grocery bill for my family of three was over two hundred dollars on Sunday, and, yeah, it's, it's, it's But like I said, we do have to make sure that we're taking care of our staff as well, and the fact that we can keep a budget within about four million dollars and still take care of our staff is very impressive.
Which, am I correct, Danielle, on that special revenue that going up, that's because we're doing more spend because we're for streets, is that right from?
That is correct, from the presentation we did on July eighth, we have, sorry, we have a few, particularly street projects where we have been sort of, sort of banking that revenue so that we could pay cash for a project, so that's, that is actually spending some of the-
From the, either from special street and highway or the sales, like, we've been holding on that because that sales tax will expire coming up, so we're getting those projects completed with that.
Correct.
Susan, you can quiet.
I mean, it was a nice little debate, but we're still going up way more than everybody else, and, and again, I think we need to get this number down, we talked about inflation, government is a big portion of, what was it last year, thirteen, sixteen percent, we went up, now another seven point seven percent, we talk about affordable housing, we talk about a lot of other things, I think we need to look at creative ways to do this salary increase without adding a bunch to it, divert some TGT to some other expenses to free some things up, I know I always bring up the fun one about social services that everyone cringes at, we did talk before about the end of year one-time bonus, I guess we were thinking we could do that, I guess if we were going to spend that money that way, is that extra money that could be used to help fund those increases, because that was one alternative we talked about.
Yep, if you, I know that there was questions about community services, and so again, when we did our governing body retreat back in January, the consensus was that we were comfortable holding that dollar amount for the general fund support for community services, is that at that five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar mark, we did make the recommendation to use, to decrease general fund support to four fifty-seven, however, supplementing with some of our opioid settlement dollars for a hundred thousand to keep that dollar amount total.
Yeah, like that.
And so I know that that is, has been a topic of conversation, we actually closed our applications at five o'clock today, and so we do have what was requested, so we received these applications and our requested amount totaling six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, and so I know that that was a question that came up, and so I wanted to make sure to share that with Mayor McCullough and Commissioner Adam Check, specifically that these, these are the twenty twenty-six community service fund requests.
I think it's very difficult to balance what the public expect from government in Manhattan with the endless increase of property taxes and that kind of thing. You know, the, the question about the police department, as I said, its, its budget is primarily personnel, and, you know, do we want to have a discussion, should we have fewer cops on the street, I mean?
We kept that down to four and a half, so we did pretty good.
Yeah, no, no, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, I think it's the same thing if we start cutting here and there, you know, people expect parks, they expect streets that are in decent man, you know, repair. Danielle has told us what it costs to provide what I think your average Manhattanite, you know, understands. I do think there's concerns with people aging in place, it doesn't do you much good if your house is worth three times as much as when you bought it, if you can't afford to pay your property taxes on it, so that's a, that's a concern. I, I think we can kind of get down in the weeds here, but I think what staff has presented us with is a, is a pretty good budget, hoping to pare down some expenses. Can I ask what the, what is the cash reserve number we're looking at?
I can, I'm, I'm not exactly sure what the, it is today, as of-
What do we plan on?
What we're planning on ending the year, we are planning on ending the year at-
Eleven point eight million.
Eleven point one, yeah, and then ending twenty twenty-six. Eleven point one, yeah, and then ending twenty twenty-six. Uh, yeah, so ending twenty twenty-five at eleven and ending twenty twenty-six at eleven point eight.
So one might ask, at what point does it make sense to have money in the bank and not buy shoes for the kid? That speak, if we were to take one mill out of that, we would be still be at ten thousand, I mean, ten million dollars in carryover. And of course, you can have bad storms, but I think if we had to tell them ten million dollar storm, we would just close up Manhattan away. So, you know, we haven't looked at that that at all, and that would, even if we just went down one mill.
I don't think that's a wise choice, Karen, because going down that much, i- i- if we go down, I mean, we already have about half the amount in our cash bal- cash reserve that the rating agencies say that we should have.
No, 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 they aren't saying twenty, we should have twenty million.
Yes, they are.
They're recommending that we have about forty or fifty percent of our operating expenses in cash reserves to maintain a triple A bond rating.
But we don't have a triple A.
We don't, we don't.
We don't, so, I mean.
No, I agree with you, because if you look comparatively, again, the county's made it be able to do it, the school board's able to do it, the police department's able to do it. The seven-point senate have been added to the twelve point six, last year's twenty point three. If you take the residential rate, you're probably more like twenty-three, twenty-four percent increase over those two years. That's why people, did you get that frantic call like I got?
Yeah, I spent thirty minutes on the phone with him.
So I want to remind people, had we not made those changes last year, that reserve fund would be at a couple of million right now, not to talk about the million-dollar snowstorm we had this year.
Yeah, I would
We we felt like we had to make those changes on it.
We we used to run, I'm sorry, we used to run the city with a very happy four million dollar reserve.
Yeah, it was down to, what, a million, two or something like that in
Two thousand something.
Before before COVID, it was it was just about over a million dollars.
But I'm not, I mean, that's not good practice.
No, it's terrible.
So, I mean, I I wouldn't want to go back there.
No, 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 I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting we go back to four or anything, but we could go back one mill and still have ten million dollars in the bank. And I I I mean, I don't care what bond council says.
It would be my
To not to not support the things we want to do and still have a reasonable property tax.
It would be my recommendation if you do not want to if you only want to leave the mill at one point one, an increase at one point one three four and not go up to the full two and use your cash balance for operating expenses. It would be my recommendation to not do anything with city employee COLA or annual salary adjustments. That would be ongoing expenses.
Yeah.
Well, we could still look at trying to tweak a little money here and there in places to try to pull some.
Yeah, Commissioner Mott, you you brought up a conversation that that we've been having, and and I do want to have that conversation out loud, or not out loud, but with all of you at the same time. We have talked about, so we did not do any salary adjustments in twenty twenty-five. And so one of the things that we have talked about is if revenues continue to to come in strong, that we might have an opportunity to do some one-time salary adjustments for our employees that our our frontline employees, those employees who who do a lot of the work for the city. That is a conversation that we could also look at doing in in twenty twenty-six. And that was, you know, kind of the recommendation I had shared with you all is if we don't do anything with COLA or annual salary adjustments, that we would strongly recommend and consider if revenues came in stronger than anticipated or if we were able to, you know, manage expenditures, that we would do again, one-time payments for employees in twenty twenty-six. And one of the questions that got brought up to me again is how long can we continue just doing those one-time one-time bonuses, spot bonuses, before we fall too far behind in our salary study or our salary ranges? I I think one of the other things that we're running up against again is just employees being able to to count on knowing that they're going to be able to get that salary adjustment like those other entities, like the county, like RCPD, like the school district. So that's just feedback that I I give you. I do think that there is an opportunity for us to do one-time adjustments in twenty twenty-five. I think there is an opportunity, depending on where this conversation ends, to do one-time payments in twenty twenty-six. But I wouldn't want to add to the base if we did not have an increase in a revenue source to support that.
So those would not be in base, they would just be bonuses, so to speak, and I don't support that. I think we have to keep with the pay study and keep.
I I concur, I think I would much rather see the annual increase implemented. The other thing that, you know, I'm concerned about, we we spoke earlier today in our briefing about sales tax revenue is looking good so far for this year. But, you know, the elephant in the room is what happens with Fort Riley next year during its major deployment. I can't remember, is it something like twelve thousand?
Nine thousand leaving August.
Yeah, so, you know, we need to be aware about that.
Four thousand they're leaving right now.
Danielle, did those, that information taken into account with our sales tax projections and?
We were, we were very conservative in our annual sales tax projections. One of the things that has been interesting to me since I've gotten here is just kind of looking at what those sales tax trends are in Manhattan. And we do have some really good years where we do see some good growth, but then the very next year, and it's very difficult to try to tie it with an explanation. Sales tax revenues are just very volatile, generally speaking, and just in the research that has been presented to me by our finance team, we typically have pretty, even more volatile sales tax revenues. So, want to be, you know, don't want to don't want to be so conservative that we're hamstringing ourselves with our sales tax revenues, because it is such an important revenue source. But at the same time, we don't want to be too aggressive and have revenues that that we're not going to meet and and having to cut back mid-year, that also creates instability and and concern amongst our department directors being able to provide those services and being able to implement programs, so.
I think one small, another small bright spot, I drove past the airport on last week one day, and construction has already started on the Amazon site, so they may be coming online earlier than we had anticipated and contributing to property taxes.
Danielle, because you have that up there, maybe this is a question for Jared, if the CisFab group needs any additional encouragement on how they're doing their social service funding, and I don't believe we gave them much direction last time, given that there's almost ninety thousand dollars requested above what's potentially available?
Yeah, there's ninety thousand dollars above in social services as well as special alcohol. Numbers are very similar. We got about, the budget for special alcohol is five hundred and fifty thousand, and it's about eighty, ninety thousand dollars over as well. We have our first meeting to talk through these on Wednesday, August twentieth. And then we'll do interviews with the special alcohol applicants at the first meeting in September, and then deliberate the third Wednesday in September, and then start over again with social services requests in October. Yeah, the the from the standpoint of feedback from the city commission, I gave as as good a direction as I could this year.
I mean, my thought is just helping prioritize our our basic human need requests, and I know you do a scale that they fill out or that they kind of rate and rank things, and I think that's one of my requests is is how they're doing that, but I'm I'm only one person, I don't know that that's a conversation for tonight necessarily.
I think it's good to give them direction on the total number, too, that way they don't go back and forth.
Yeah, and and they do have the total. These two numbers are, what we've provided is what's in the budget, so they know that they can't provide more than that. I've I've given the, just the anecdotal feedback that are received from kind of each commissioner and the themes related to critical needs in the community, potentially looking at organizations that receive funding from both and how you can maybe make a call there.
Okay, I was just looking at the requested compared to.
Right, so I I would add, they, that five hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, that is what we have currently budgeted. That's in my proposed budget, that number is still up for discussion. It is not adopted yet, but yes, they have requested six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's where I think it helps if we, which is one of the things, when we kind of switched to these two together, we said we were going to do, which was to give them a number ahead of time, so that way we didn't go back and forth and then we deviated and we haven't done that.
This has been helpful, too, because before they deliberate on special, special alcohol is really a set number, because it's based on the projections that we have, so there's really not a lot of wiggle room in that. But by the time they start deliberating the social services funds in October, the number will be set because the budget will be passed, so that's helpful.
So should we go back to the the three scenarios?
I mean, I have a question, John, you keep saying that we're not there. Can you throw out what you are thinking it should be?
Four and a half percent was the number that I had, but I'll I'm willing to go with what Karen's talking about, if that can get this number down, but I think we should be able to go farther. We lost all our papers here.
So if we, Commissioner Motta
It's forty million, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-five.
Okay. Forty, this was the number I was trying to get to when I was over there, country number. I'm sorry, you said forty, what?
Forty million, four zero zero, two six, three sixty-five.
So our so our growth in in property tax, so you're talking total with that four and a half.
Right, and part of this is skewed because of the way you're doing RCPD and allocating that, which I guess I would challenge you could change that.
So trying to kind of try to explain this here, so when we presented on July eighth, we presented no increase in the general fund mill levy. We did include those increases in sales tax, the one and a half increase in sales tax, and then some fees and other sources of revenues that were in there. So again, if we were to look at the general fund and that original proposal that was put before you on July eighth, that would be, I believe, would be about a three point eight seven percent increase in property tax. That is just that that growth. So we could, if you're comfortable with the four point five, that would still be a little bit of additional mill for general fund. I would have to ask my experts, Rena and Rebecca, to run that calculation to come up with what that four and a half percent number would be, because the budget that we presented on July eighth was only three point eight seven percent. I I'm trying to to run that and like and and facilitate this conversation, so I'm having a hard time calculating that.
It's okay, that's what's great, it's a work session, I think that's why we get to like work through all of this in real time.
Busy working on it in the back.
To Commissioner Mittens' suggestion earlier, if we wanted to maintain expenditures at that thirty-eight million, I do know that that mill levy, just because it is the hundred and eighty-seven thousand, that is about a quarter of a mill. And so I do know if we wanted to keep our general fund expenditures at thirty-eight million, which would be consistent with what they were at, budgeted at in twenty twenty-five, that would be a one point seven five mill levy increase.
I I mean, I I'll just reiterate what I said, that I I wouldn't be comfortable with going over last year's expenditure for the general fund, so I I wouldn't be comfortable voting in favor of going that. So if that means that that would put my ceiling at one point seven five mils, that's that's where my new ceiling is, but I, we still have so many discussions, I think, to have about this and and work through it. But and that's, so that's just my my feedback, I'm not sure where everyone stands at where my my ceiling would be with more discussion and more working through some of these things.
So Jamie, when would you expect to do that?
And part of that's, like, I mean, I think I've got all of John's math next to me as well, but I think just working through that individually as well. I am interested on the sessions that we're having with the community, and I hope to attend one of those to kind of hear and get feedback. And so when I'm saying like work through some of that, I think we keep talking about it and and wanting feedback and wanting discussions. Granted, I I I know generally people say, please, keep property taxes low. I think people also tell us, you know, live within our means, which is where I'm at with that budget number. And then also, you know, please don't cut services. Hear that a lot, and so want to make sure that we're meeting all of those.
Jamie, are you suggesting that we continue this discussion on August twenty-sixth, which is our next work meeting? Would you want to be, have part of the agenda, the budget be on the agenda again?
I mean, I think if there's some new information, or if we feel like there's some compromise or seeing those things, but I I guess I was envisioning, I know we are all having discussions, not with each other, but working through things, looking at the numbers, going back through every time we, you know, get a bit more. I don't know that we may, I I don't know, I can't speak for everyone on it. I think I want to get more input.
Well, that would be the opportunity for us to reflect on what we hear at the open houses as well.
I I will share with you, the the budget open houses, we are very excited about that and presenting that. Because we are having poster boards and we are printing materials, those budgets currently are projected at the one point one three four, including that budget. So that, we were ready to make adjustments this evening to either one bump that to two mils or to land anywhere between the one point one three four and two mils. I I think what I, my recommendation, my suggestion and a direction that I'm looking for from you all this evening, we are very close, right? I think we're between one point one three four and two for sure. I think we are starting to whittle down to between one point one three four and one point seven five. I guess my, I know that with Commissioner Mottas, no, Commissioner Mottas shaking his head at me, he is not there. But we need three votes, and so I guess direction this evening, we will not be able to do cost of living and salary adjustments if we only increase four and a half percent. We won't be able to to maintain services and programs and be able to provide the cost of living. So I I can tell you that that number is not going to be enough, so we would probably be better off staying at the one point one three four. And then if you, but if you all are interested in doing something with salaries, we'd need to be in COLA, we need to be somewhere between one point five and one point seven five.
I'm I'm interested in that.
Me, too.
So you've got three agreements. Jamie, how are you?
I mean, I said what my ceiling was, so I I I don't want to continue conversations at the two-mill discussion, if I'm being frank about things. That's that's really where I'm at. I also want to point out that I hate that we're sitting here and discussing Um, that's that's really where I'm at. I also want to point out that I hate that we're sitting here and discussing the worth of individuals. I get that we are commissioners and that we are up here to represent the budgets, but um I am I'm not a fan of sitting here and and saying it's not worth it for you to make um an adjustment in your in your wage. That's not fun. These are real people who work in the city and to sit up here and and talk very cavalier about their wages. And I understand and I respect the decision to not include the department heads, but those are also some of our hardest working employees. Um, and so it would be terrible for us to lose any of those individuals. Uh, it I I just I hate having this discussion in this where we're sitting here and really just debating the worth of of individuals in that. I like to look at the overall budget as a whole and not not sit here and just pick apart these. I don't want to say small because it is an increase and it's something that all of us as taxpayers will have to pay. I just um would like to work through this um hopefully in different ways in the in the future that we're not having to see, you know, I would like your recommendation of this is what our budget needs to be um and use the city manager recommendation, whether or not that includes um cost of living increases or or not.
Yeah.
Um, instead of trying to pull out those as this separate really negotiable item. I don't know if that makes sense.
But I just suggest that I think um I hear quite a bit of consensus at one point seven five. And if we say one seven five back to Danielle and say that's our parameters and that's where we'll go and see. Um, and we want you to do as much cost of living and that kind of thing as possible. Um, and I mean, because we're really running pretty late in the budget year to start talking about point two five and, you know, this kind of thing. Um, I think most of us are, you know, will be, we will lower it below two, which makes me feel good, makes should make John feel a little bit good.
Well, just wanted to say, because you were asking me about that three point eight one, so we're saying telling her not to bother to calculate those out.
Calculate what out?
Well, she was looking at that of the four and a half percent to go from the three eight one up to the four and a half percent. She was going to do some work on that.
The difference of like point two mils, I think, is that what it may be?
You know, if no one's even going to consider that, there isn't much uh point.
To to Commissioner Mittens, to to your point um about trying to kind of have this comprehensive um conversation, we do have a certain service level um delivery that we try to provide. And um those conversations with department directors were um very, very tense when we are talking about, you know, I will um I will poke at my Parks and Rec director a little bit and, you know, talking about janitorial supplies um and, you know, like truly like getting down to the nitty gritty and twelve hundred dollars, uh twenty five hundred dollars increase in janitorial supplies and and trying to pull that back. Um, and so.
It's worth it for three play.
So um those conversations were were really um tough um in that service delivery. And so um while it is hard to um I will, I will say this. This number um that you saw um on your July eighth um commission, when we talk about what the total uh needed, the twenty twenty six recommendation to um run this entire organization is a hundred and seventy almost a hundred and seventy five million dollars. So uh when we do talk about what you all have uh the most control over, and it is that general fund and it is that mill levy. And so we've gone from a hundred and seventy five million dollars down to uh thirty eight million dollars. And of that thirty eight million dollars, seventy percent of it is personnel. So it's very difficult uh when we are talking about uh what it takes to run this organization and not talk about um our employees.
Just I I agree with that. I'm saying that it is like doing that up here is not an easy um debate, as I'm sure it has not been in internally either. And I do appreciate you having all of those conversations and um just talking about how how we're looking at our um from this level, all of those things and and it's not easy, I think, for you, for any of us, yeah, or the employees.
Maybe I'll just end with, and and again, the um I still throw the challenge out there, but I say I don't have the numbers here. And I do appreciate everything you've done. I think you did a lot of things that haven't been done in the past with having rearranged staff. Uh, but being someone that's gone through many a budget war and many companies that were on the brink and some that went um under, I was usually told, find a way. And most of the time, we found a way to get to that and uh do it with very good results and uh with very good retention and everything else. It was very rare that I ever presented a budget and it was accepted on the first uh round. And again, on the presentation, the three scenarios, I know what scenario I would have gotten, scenario four, which was less than any of them on the on the page.
John, I do want to point out, RCPD presented a lower budget, too.
The, well, there's a little different. I have to get a number of votes there. My boss only needed one vote.
But you voted for it.
Sometimes you have to vote for something to get it through, just like if you'll go down to one point one three four, if it takes a third vote, I'll probably vote for it. If you if it's not going to need my vote, I probably won't vote for it.
I don't think it needed your vote, John. Didn't it go five to one?
The um.
No, it went four to three in the the RCPD budget.
Right, then at the then at the final, there's another vote you have to do that just formalized.
That was a very confusing meeting.
The um and if we wouldn't have had a kind of a commission switch around, I would have had a lower budget the time before.
Um, okay, could I?
But I'm talking about other things besides RCPD.
Yeah.
Um, I do think that Danielle needs some kind of um at least quasi answer and with what we can what we can deal with. And um I think most of us feel we must do something for staff because otherwise we will simply fall behind her and behind her and we'll lose more people, good people, but and people who like working here. But if they can get nine thousand someplace else in Manhattan, Kansas, that's that's a lot. I also think that people are concerned about their property taxes. There's no question about that. On the other hand, they're not here with torches and pickaxes to get us tonight or anything, the, you know, so we're not under fire. We had some good comments from people, but um uh let's let's see if we can't um come to consensus so she can have nice poster boards on Saturday.
Um, Danielle, can you tell us what is scheduled for the work session on the twenty sixth?
Uh, we currently have been holding that for possible budget conversation. There is nothing on their agenda this time.
All right. I I think, can we agree that we would continue this conversation coming close with giving you some direction tonight? I would advocate for rerunning some numbers with the one point seven five. Mill levy. Do we have some consensus on that?
I would agree, as long as some dollars are in it for staff.
So if we run one point, if if we have a mill levy of one point seven five, I can tell you off the top of my head, it will be two point four percent for cost of living adjustments and annual salary adjustments. We will cut the hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars for vehicle and equipment replacement.
I am more comfortable with that because the vehicles don't have families to feed. And I'll just for to for you all to think about, and and I guess you all, too. So my assessed valuation is, I think, around thirty thousand. And so one mil is thirty dollars for me. And if I have to pay thirty dollars next year so that the rest of our staff can get a little bit of an adjustment in their pay uh to help out with some of these inflation pressures, I am happy to do that. And so uh I think that's something to break down, you know, if we want to go that granular with people when we're having these conversations um and say, hey, do you want to give fifty dollars or, you know, it that's a that's a very high priced home? But that that's where our that's what we're arguing over is in the 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 tens of dollars for a year um to give our staff raises, and that's an easy question for me.
Yeah.
I'd just say I've heard that that's many a commissioner's argument when it comes to increasing taxes and that way, and that's why taxes go up at high percentages. Because when people are doing their budgets, they're allocating by what percent they have for this, what percent they have for that, and looking what's driving up their total cost. And I think that's where the um differences come in and the compounding comes in and everything else. Because yes, when you put it this way, why not just increase it more?
Well, John, hopefully next year we can start doing more long-term budgeting and and have things more spread out, and we can definitely think more long-term. That has not been the case in the past, and and we are where we are, and we have to make this decision for next year, and that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I know there's some who think that we have basically undertaxed people, and that's why we have to increase it that much at this time. I doubt that's an argument uh favored or believed by most.
No, I don't think we've been undertaxed. Um, we have different management styles now.
I think I think, too, we're we're thinking about the staff, which is really important, but we got to think about the price of asphalt, too. I mean, it's going up more than, you know, five percent per year. It's it's um those costs. And, you know, should we not buy um replacement vehicles, that means the maintenance will go up. So, you know, you can be penny wise and pound foolish when you strangle the budget too much. You're just going to end up spending more money on um maintenance and repair and um loss of of workers if if, you know, we don't take care of them.
Yeah, I just think a lot of people don't think twenty percent in two years is strangling the budget.
So do we want to have another conversation on August twenty sixth about this? Or um and what when if we do want to have another conversation on August twenty sixth about this, what um I'm hearing you want a scenario for one point seven five. We can run a scenario uh for a four and a half percent increase. I will certainly um put that on the table if we're going to meet on August twenty sixth. Um, those will be the and we will maintain the one point one three four um scenario that we have. I I'm not seeing three head nods to go any lower than one point one three four. So we will keep that um on the table, and then we will look at what a four and a half percent increase would look like. And then um we will look at what one point seven five percent or one point seven five mil looks like.
I just want to clarify one thing. When you say the four and a half percent on the on your city side, I think we're on the same page. You're going to take that for four and a half. But if you leave that PD funding it the same way you funded it now, it's still going to come out well over that number.
Yeah.
You have to adjust that funding or else you're still way over that number.
I'm I'm not seeing three head nods to change the way we're funding RCPD at this time.
Okay, but and again, that's because of a decision made to switch around and rely more on property tax than you have in the past.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Danielle, are you satisfied? Um, are you, do you do you feel like we've given you enough information for the rest of your life?
I I I do. Um, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay, then we will.
I think I I would like commissioners to think if they really think we need a meeting on August twenty sixth and we can get back um to you all.
Can we, can we?
Can you send us the the information?
I'm going to run um. We will run, uh, I'm trying, I'm going to get myself in trouble here. You know, we, the mail folder is available on on the things that we share with commissioners, our open record.
Well, on the sixteenth of September, we can come back with all the scenarios you've just spoke of.
Oh, we can talk about.
If commissioners want information from us, they can call us, email us, or just meet with us.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's good. And we can, yeah, perfect. All right, does that make sense? So we can, over the next couple of weeks or so, uh, we will work on um getting that information to you all. And then we will walk through the one point seven five mil scenario on um September sixteenth, when we have our public hearing. When we do the actual adoption.
I'm sorry, Danielle, the one thing that I would ask, we do have to publish another budgeted amount.
Yeah.
You went out with revenue neutral rate with a two mil increase. If you recall, last year, we had two hearings with two different rates. Are you fine with the two mils going out for the pub the published budget? And then we have this discussion on the sixteenth, or do you want the budget to be published at a lower mil rate than two?
I think you know what I want.
Well, yeah, I'm looking for three head nods.
I think we should do one seven five, because that's what we've kind of come to consensus on, I think.
You won't be able to go above it. That's the only thing.
Yeah, yeah. You will not be able to go above one point seven.
When does that need to get published?
By.
At least ten days.
Yeah, we got to have it to the paper the last week of August.
Okay.
Is there some reason not, since people are not, we don't have a consensus seemingly, is there a reason not to meet on the twenty sixth about this?
I will defer to commissioners. If you guys want to meet, we can certainly meet.
I mean.
I think we should.
We're meeting on the twenty sixth anyway, aren't we? I mean, why wouldn't?
It's on the calendar. Yeah, I think I think we ought to have it just just get together. I mean, we'll have feedback to talk about from our open houses. It may not be a long meeting, but I think it's still worthwhile.
I think, quite frankly, canceling as many meetings as we've canceled because of Fifth Tuesdays and those kinds of things has been somewhat of a detriment to this commission because they haven't had a chance to talk about a lot of things that um in the past we have kind of hashed over in these work sessions.
Yeah, and we'll I think we'll have a better idea for publishing. It, yeah, it may be fifteen minutes, but I think we should still get together.
Uh, if if it's okay with the commission, we'll probably add a couple other items um rather than just have the budget conversation. So it will probably be a full meeting if we meet.
Okay.
So, okay.
Okay.
Thank you all.
We have the city, oh, go ahead.
Does she have a city manager update?
Yeah, right here, I was going to.
Yeah.
Um.
Sorry.
We will um send the the calendar items um to you all in your mail folder, um so you will know what all those are um and who is RSVP'd for all of those. Um, we do have a couple items that we have in the works that we are planning on bringing forward to you all a work session. Uh, those include the workforce housing report. So that will um either be on uh August twenty sixth or uh in September. We also have um, that might be something that we add. We also have a conversation um for Aggieville, uh how we're providing Aggie trash in Aggieville, uh solid waste services in Aggieville. We have that conversation uh coming up uh for you all in a upcoming work session as well, so. Other than that, I have no other updates for you.
Um, is anybody going to the KLC conference in October?
I'm away.
You're not here.
She's no, she's going to the.
You're going to the national one. I could go to the one in October.
I think that's great.
Um, so, yeah, I'll I'll go ahead. I'll have talk to Chelsea and Lauren and have me sign up for that, so.
It was very interesting last year.
Yeah.
And, you know, well, I think we are adjourned.
Cool. We don't have to have a movement.
We don't even have to, we just leave. There's nothing. Thank you all for coming.